Yes, we're officially about 5:15 and so I'd like to call it together. A meeting to order and determine the quorum. I guess we have Jade and Greg and Joe out here and so only Monty's missing so we have the quorum.
And Joanie.
And Joanie, yeah. So, Joanie gonna be here?
She's gonna be late, she said.
Okay. We still have the quorum, is that right Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the first item here is the fact that it's a public quorum and we discussed that a little bit the last time, so if that's okay, we'll just move to the main thing here. Item C, approve the agenda. Motion on that. So move. Second. All say aye?
Aye.
The next item here is discussion items and so here we'll turn it over to Dr. Burnett.
Okay. You guys wanna speak? We don't have Jeff.
I was thinking Jeff's here.
Jeff's not here, so we'll show, here's the elementary citizens of the week or cowls. And they get to wear the cow vests. So, staffs with, staff citizens of the week were Dean Mojer and Lori Knudsen and then the students are Julian Hernandez Ramirez, Brody Neeson, Leah Severson, which is that Jenny's little daughter? Yeah. And Levi Shields. Look at their smiles there. Bill, you got a guys on a trip?
Yeah, so Mrs. Casper Bauer takes a trip to Washington DC every year. It's very, very well organized. The kids are busy from the time they set foot there until they come home and get a lot of miles walking, but see a lot of very good things out there. We had 51 students and 23 adult chaperones went along and so everything went well this year out there once again, so thanks for the kids and the parents that chaperoned and of course Mrs. Casper Bauer that organizes that whole trip. In Mrs. Blair's room, we had a writing contest per se and it was sponsored by the local VFW and there are two of the three winners in Grace Hyveley and Elizabeth Sorenson. One person is, that was from eighth grade that also was a recipient of an award was Carly Tornaton, but she was absent for the picture, so good job to those three gals. Mrs. Dare is in charge of some of our bulletin boards and so after the Rachel's Challenge Assembly, we had some kids that made a bulletin board that says just take what you need up there and some of them is, and so kids can just go pick up a sticky if they see something on there that encourages them for what they need. It might be an extra smile, pat on the back, just an extra hello type thing. So, I'm not sure, is there, is there one more or no?
Is there one more? Yep.
Yep, and then that was the breakout group from the Rachel's Challenge Assembly for the kids that came back for the FOR group. So, we'll be looking at, setting up some meetings about what we can be doing intentionally for some positive things going on in our building led by students.
They had a great turnout after 100 kids, after the morning presentation and the 100 middle school kids in the afternoon, so it was really, really good.
High school jazz band. We've been to two competitions. We've been to Morningside and the Simpson College Festival and we've got first place at both and we're at Glenwood today, so if we get a first or second today, we would qualify for the Iowa State Jazz competition. Then we have Zane Bendorf, he was a sectional wrestling champion, district wrestling champion. He ended up getting six in the state. And then there's Brayden Erst. He, individual series, he broke the school record for the individual series with a 476. That's with two games, that's averaging about 238 a game. That's, if I break 138, I'm all right, 238's kind of his average. Then we have Grace Keenan and Megan Klein there, got a one rating in broadcasting at the State Speech. And then down in the bottom right is Rebecca Brooke and Quentin McDowell. They, we got first place at Show Choir at North Polk. So, we're having lots of accolades going on at this time, rolling into the postseason. As of tonight, we're gonna start our postseason basketball. We will play, we will verse Perry tonight and we're off to a great winter sports and then wrapping that up and looking to move forward this spring.
And bowling, the two girls?
Bowling, we had a send-off for our two bowling girls that qualified, which would be Ania Castor and Sophia Grody. They qualified for individual bowling, they took off today. They will bowl tomorrow at nine o'clock in the morning, so.
Is that televised?
It's gonna be Facebook Live with Jamie FFO Harlan Community Bowling and she's gonna go Facebook Live with them. So, that'll be tomorrow at nine in the morning or so.
Thank you guys. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Rachel's Challenge presentation. So, every student was able to see the Rachel's Challenge presentation and it was different at the elementary school than it was here for sure because here it was a little bit more emotional and it really did talk about being kind to others and you never know what someone's going through. And at the elementary, she kinda had them up dancing and singing and just be kind to each other. So, in the afternoon, they did the presentation in the morning to all students and in the afternoon, if they wanted to come back, they could come back for the FOR club, or Friends of Rachel, it's F-O-R, and it's just a kindness club. The elementary already has one, which is awesome. And then the middle school will be doing some things and Brenda Renter, our school-based interventionist, is gonna lead that. So, the elementary, like I said, had 100-plus students and it was awesome. They divided up into, or I'm sorry, the middle school, kind of groups of 10 and all came up with different ideas of things they can, they can already do. And then the high school was on Tuesday morning presentation, Tuesday afternoon, they had about 109 students and same thing, came up with some good ideas. And then in the evening, we had a community event and that was really nice. Thank you for all of those who did attend and we had dinner provided by a local church, which we appreciate Troy and Brenda Renter. And there were probably between 80 and 100 people there too, so that was very, very nice. Just another plug too for Portrait of a Graduate, which many of you have been, been to that too that are on the board and we're just excited. We just started planning our second meeting and just understanding what we want our graduates or our students to accomplish from preschool with to graduating. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we have an opportunity with Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates, it's called IJ. And we can get a full-time teacher for a very small amount. It's just a contract of $25,000, which a full-time teacher usually costs much more than that for next year. And they would work with 50 students and help them on career readiness, character and self-development, communication, critical thinking, life skills, self-advocacy and work-based learning. So, they would have classes with them, teach two or three classes and then also go out into the community and help them find job shadowing places or internships. And then another really good bonus is they would follow the kids after they graduate for 12 months after and make sure that they are on the right track and they've gotten the support that they need to, whether they're in school or they're in the military or they're working on a job. So, it's, it's, it's a really good deal. There's a lot of schools in Iowa that have IJ teachers. They would not be hired by Harlan, they would be hired by the, it's kind of a collaboration between apprenticeships, the Iowa Apprenticeships, the Department of it and us. So, we would get, be a part in helping hire. Scott and I spoke to the gentleman the other day and I just think there's a, there's just, it'll fit right in with our Iowa Western stuff and everything else, so kind of just be an extra adult for, for a roster of up to 50 kids.
How would you determine who works with them?
There's, there's a list of.
Like an at-risk?
Mm-hmm. And there's a list of probably about 50 different qualifications, which can be from anything, from struggling in school to attendance and all different kinds of, kinds of things, but just a list.
You said they'd follow postgraduate for the first year, would they help any that have already graduated or just, you know, the first year when they come in next year?
Yep.
Will they start with anybody who's already graduated or just work that in the following year?
So, they want us to kind of pick a two-year window, so we could decide that. So, if we wanna start this with just ninth and 10th graders and then follow them, or if we wanna do 10th, 11th, or if we wanna do 11th and 12th, we can decide that, so. And then some districts have more than one, so they may have one for an 11th, 12th and one for a 9th, 10th. And in fact, I know some districts that have them at the middle school too, so we could just decide, I guess, Joe, where we would think would be best to fit, so, yeah. And we, so the reason I'm talking about this is because we don't have the contract on, on the agenda right now, but if we, when we get it on there, the sooner we sign the contract, the sooner they can start looking for a teacher. So, that's, I'm just a little worried about everybody's struggling right now to find teachers. And that's it?
Okay, next are the action items that have to be approved individually. And so first we have the personnel report and I'll call those back to you.
Hi Catherine. Yeah, I do. So, basically, starting in the last meeting, we went away from attaching every single person's contract to kind of just a summary of what's going on in personnel. So, it talks about the four people that we've had resign within the last month to teaching positions and then some coaching. Then we also have all of our new hires from last month. Most of them are teacher associates and coaches, but we do have two new teachers that are already on there. Madison Shetler is going to be high school special education and Nicole Holtz will be elementary teachers. We've got a couple of other teachers that we've offered positions to, but we, we don't have their signed letter back or we're waiting for some, some other things. So, if you continue to go down, we've got a new substitute. And then we also just highlight our vacancies for this year and next year. So, ooh, and this one, we had a lot of movement internally in the school, so you'll see that, I just kinda put those on there for you, so that you would, you would know when you saw the certified vacancies for next year, that a lot of them are created from internal movement and kind of where that is. And then if you wanna go down, yeah, so those are our certified openings that we still are looking for, for next year. We are interviewing, we had interviews today. I know that I put for the counselor, we were pending an offer and that was because we were done with our interviews and then we got a couple of more interviews and we thought by this time we would have an offer pending, but we, we don't just yet, so that's my apology and I learned my lesson for putting on that a little early. So, I couldn't take it off because the agenda was already posted by that time, so we have, but we've got really good candidates, so we'll get there soon. So, that's the personnel report. Does anyone have any questions?
In general, they're going pretty good? Vacancies and.
I would say yes. We, we switched over to a new system and so we're having some difficulties with that, but we're getting a lot of applicants in and we're, we're just gearing up and really starting to interview lots of people right now. And so, I think that we've had good candidates and made good, or made offers, so I think we're, I think we're doing okay.
Do you mind me asking, what's your new system involve just organization or?
We went, it's an online application. We went from Talent Ed to just to Teach Iowa. Talent Ed costs money and Teach Iowa is completely free to us, so we just switched over to it. And just a few pickups, like getting people logged on, but then after that, we're doing okay. Yep. Yep.
Okay. Next, we have the presentation of the Harlan Education Association's initial proposal.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, we need to vote?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote on that. Let me get a.
Aye motion.
Motion. In a second.
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so here I'm anxious to move on to the presentation of the Harland Education Association's initial proposal for the 2022-2023 collective bargaining agreement. So, we would like to welcome the Harland Education Association.
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name is Chad Runz, I am co-chair of the Harland Negotiation Committee. The co-chair is also standing right here.
Hi there.
And let me go ahead and pass this out, I think I have three there and I have five there for everybody. And just would ask you to read through that. If you have any questions or clarifications, let us know. I'll give you a minute or two to read through that.
And I wanna be very clear about this, this is, what we'll be doing is taking a motion to receive the proposal and not approving it at this time, but just basically receiving it at this time. So, I wanna be clear about that. And so first, we should see if there's any particular discussion about the proposal.
Possibly a dumb question, but is this pretty consistent then with what happens with other school districts? Do you look at what they ask for, the same types of things too, or is it all separate based on the school district?
It's all separate, usually based on school district, but I would say that this year has, it's a little bit different circumstance because if you go to mediation, like if we, if we go back and forth, like they come in with 10 and we say, we start with one and we kinda go back and forth, if you go to mediation, the, the lower of the two, so either 3% or the lower of whatever the consumer price.
On package.
On average.
On package.
On package. The lower of those two is where you're gonna end up in mediation. So, it's, so right now, like inflation rate is very high, so it's like, I think it's around 6% or something. So, we just kind of agreed that, they just settled last week for student supplemental aid at 2.5 and Brian felt like we could make the 3% work and so this is, I think it's a little bit different than usual. I think usually you kinda go back and forth, but in this situation, it's a little bit different. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious how the increase came about, where numbers come from. Does it come based off of what our community can support or what our school district can support or kind of what people do around?
Mostly what the school district can support. So, what Brian does is we wait to hear back to see what our insurance rate is gonna go up and what SSA is from the governor, which I think that's gonna be signed this week. And then you determine kind of your pot of money that you have to negotiate with. So, we had, we had kind of already known that 3% was where we wanted to, we were gonna land, so we just prepared for that. So, it's been a little bit different procedure, I guess, yes.
And does this happen every year?
Yes. Base wages, happens every year. Yes. And our contract is up for renewal, so that's new. Normally you don't see the contract language.
So, they had a five-year contract. So, then that's the other thing is they, they came and said they didn't really wanna make any changes in the contract and we said, that's fine with us. The only things we've amended are, there are some things in there for professional development base, like each year, based on the calendar, you might have a different number, so we've, we will adjust those, but otherwise, if we, we have a three-year or a five-year contract, then, and that's really the only thing that can be negotiated is base wages right now.
Right. We wanna make one little, where it says the base wages, the association proposed a yearly salary increase, it should be yearly package increase.
Okay.
Sorry.
Brian, did you notice that?
Yes. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad we approved, I'm glad we received it and didn't approve it.
Yes.
So, Brian, we're always, I'm always interested in, I mean, obviously you've come, you've looked at the numbers and looking at 2.5% SSA, we're good.
It's never gonna, it's never gonna be easy when you get 2.5.
Yeah, but if you come out at three, you're, sure.
Yeah. It's kind of a loaded question.
Yeah.
I mean, when you get 2.5 and you're given three, you gotta figure out where to.
Where it comes from.
Where it comes from.
Yeah.
It's worth mentioning that the teachers are so important to the school district and it represents 80% of our expenditures, which underscores that they are really valuable.
And just to reiterate, I think what Jenny said, it's mediation, arbitration, whatever it is, it's, 3% is where it will end.
Yeah.
Irregardless.
That was the basis of my question, I guess, I mean, that doesn't really, yeah, that's what I meant by that.
Well, I won't have to ask these questions next year.
There's no questions.
This is a unique, unique here. Okay, we have a motion to receive the proposal.
You probably wanna make that motion to accept it with the correction.
Okay.
The package, just so.
Thank you, Brian.
They've clarified the, the actual dollar base amount, but to make, so they match up, you probably wanna make the motion to include that.
Yes.
It's a substitute package for salaries.
Very good.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next is the presentation of the Harland Community School District Board of Education's initial proposal for the 2023 collective bargaining. So, this is the initial proposal and on that committee is Al and myself and Monty Schekinger. And so, we have discussed this and this is what we came up with in a nutshell, is the board proposes the following increase to teacher base salary, $609. And so, if there's any discussion on that, we'll turn it over to comments or thoughts you might have about that.
Do you want to read that? No, I just am saying, I could, I could put that on that, the wording from the contract arms. I mean, we're.
Again, silly question, but now we're actually approving, this is what we're saying.
We are.
No.
Okay, explain to us.
Your house.
Please, that's a great question Jade. I just, what we're doing is we're making an initial proposal and so we will have another board meeting to approve it and I don't know how that goes. First, if they approve it first, then we approve it second.
You basically, these guys can speak too, but basically what would happen, you meet an exempt session, you, you come to a tentative agreement, they take it to their, is, I guess, Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys take it to your constituents.
Union members.
Then you, then you, I got, careful, I use the acronyms too much, but you tentatively agree, the board tentatively agrees and it's ratified at the next board, next board meeting, correct?
Right. We have to have our members vote. It needs to be open forum for us to be here today and for you to counter it open and then we can go to closed session after.
So, wasn't that dumb of a question?
No. Yeah. Yes.
They have more than. In agreement, so this is just, we'll have follow-through after that.
Yes, I think so, yes, yes.
My assumption.
Might mention too, that this is a little bit unusual and it's advantageous to the teachers and the school district to be able to move on. Is that right Jenny?
Yes, I would say yes and I think it's helpful for us to be able, because once we settle, then we can send out contracts and then everybody can see what's on their contract and then if, we have 21 days and if people maybe are looking for something else or don't wanna sign their contract, that gives us time to look for a new, a new hire. So, I think people will stay, but you never know.
Okay, so do we have a motion to, for the initial proposal, acceptance of the initial proposal here?
Yes, I feel confident now. I'm accepting it.
A second on that?
Second.
Great, so that, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda here is the policy review schedule, second reading.
So, on these, just FYI, there were no changes that came from the policy review committee after the first reading, so just wanted to clarify that.
Any discussion or see anything there? How about a motion to approve the policy review schedule?
Approved. Policy review, second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good to see you here, Joanie.
Thank you. I knew I'd be here, but I knew I'd be great.
Joanie, here's the final proposal. Joanie, we are on item five of the action items on the second page, which is the policy review schedule, first reading.
So, just, there's just two changes in the policies that the policy committee talked about. The first one being letter J, regular meeting to 10:02 and it's just to update that we are meeting once a month now and at 5:15, so those are the only changes, just to update. And then the second one is the 40902 license employee personnel illness leave and honestly, it's just to update it because it wasn't accurate. The number of sick days that were given to employees was inaccurate, based on, I don't know when that change happened, but we're just updating it. It's, it says 10 and it's actually 12, so.
Did you catch that?
Yes. Yes, I did. Because I, I got confused one day.
On that sick leave, do they accumulate year after year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and the longer they're here, the more they accumulate.
Yeah, I saw that, like one day per, per year or something? Okay.
Very good, okay. How about a motion on accepting the policy review schedule, first reading?
So. Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. The approval of requests for allowable growth for modified supplemental amount for dropout, drop-off prevention and the amount of $489,76. Who could speak to that?
Do you wanna speak to it, Brian?
Mr. Chair. This is our annual request, it's something we do every year. It helps cover some of the excess costs of our at-risk programs. The amount's similar each year, it's usually right around this amount. It allows us essentially to get the authority so we can be able to get those funds. The one comment is, and I don't know that I could tell you exactly, but I think every, every school in the state does this request, so. I think they said last week or two weeks ago when I was at budget training, they said now everybody is doing it.
I think there was a bill in place because for a few years back, they kinda, they froze the, so ours is like 5% of, and some weren't using it and they were only like had 3.5, like one key for example. So, there's a bill in place now to make it, everyone should get five, because it's kind of inequitable right now, but we're at, we're at where we need to be, so we're good.
What are some of the things we use this money for?
There's pretty wide variety, but some of it's the time that we have to, there's six or seven of them right off the top, I'm gonna do the easy ones, I can remember easy, Jade, but. easy, Jade, but we recruit some of the time that we spend in credit recovery, that's a real easy one, it allows us, our guidance counselors do some work with that risk kids, so it allows us to get some of their, their wages and that, and I'm gonna have to dig a little deeper.
Would any of that IJ come out of this?
The IJ could come out of that.
IJ could, yes, this would be...
So, it's money we would already have, we don't need another $25,000 for a teacher necessarily, it could be...
We can, yes, we've, Brian has said, yep.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you're, you're still talking, it takes authority when you've done something, and I think I've explained that to you, but this is an applicable use.
Some districts use it for intermurals, it's basically anything to help a student not drop out of school and to help them, so, it could be your MTSS time, like our Wynn time.
Yes, that's...
Any of those things could be included in this, after-school clubs, all kinds, I mean, we don't necessarily use it for those things, but anything related to at-risk, like a portion of the counselors is a big piece, I think, a portion of Anne Hightoff even, because she does behavior intervention.
What is our dropout percentage?
It's very low. Very good, because your graduation percentage is like 95, 95?
I think about 93 now.
And we're above the state average.
Very good, yeah.
Green Hills was here just a few weeks ago, and they laid on us a lot of statistics and data, and it was, it was very interesting how Harlan is very high in many of the statistics and Hawkeye 10.
Do you think that's money-based, or program-based? It's good family-based, and good, they get a good, good start, and I think it's all of us together, yeah.
There were a lot, through a lot of those figures in the portrait of the graduate.
Okay, unless there's any other discussion, do I have a motion to, for the approval of this request?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is the approval of the purchase of used bus from Thomas Bus Sales Incorporated.
Okay, I'll speak to this, we actually, in our budget, PEPAL budget, Jared and I did a three-year plan, and one of the things we tried, we were trying to address is getting our fleet back up to where we aren't uncomfortable, we have to put a sub bus out on the route, that it's maybe not the best bus to put out there, so, one of the things we talked about last year was bringing in some fairly new late, or I should say, late model buses, year-old that have been on lease, they're really hard to find, we were fortunate, we found a company that had one last year, and we, the same company, had another one this year, it actually, we built the budget around purchasing two of these used buses, this is the second one, and the real fortunate part about it is, is we were able to procure a Volkswagen emissions grant last year, and we also got one this year, and that essentially is enough to pay for this bus.
Awesome.
So, and now we have to use that against the new buses we purchased. And it's really, finding these used buses, if you find one like this, you're getting, you're actually getting probably 80 to 85% of the, the life of the bus, and you're buying them for 60% of the cost, so it's kind of...
They're over $100,000 generally.
You're generally, a new one, we haven't got our bids yet, very good, a new one, the hundred-ish, and we're getting these for 60, and we know where they came from too, which we know the school they came from, we know how well they've been taken care of, so...
Is that because of the Thomas Bus relationship, or how, how were you able to?
Well, we were really fortunate, we've done enough business with them over the years, we kind of had put a bug in his ear about if you came across something that came off a lease, and he contacted us last year, and I think it was right after Jenny started, and I called her and I says, you got two and a half minutes to decide.
He was giving money, not me, that's funny.
They could have sold it probably six times after.
I bet, yeah.
I was just gonna say, so, are you, or are we on like a name list that when they have a bus, they'll, they'll like call you?
They don't expect there to be a lot more of these, because people are having a hard time, people are gonna not, probably lease buses, you can buy them, you're gonna buy them.
Okay.
It's hard to find a bus right now.
Because that's a good resource.
Yeah, well, I told him, I told him, if you get any more, let me know, but he didn't, says it's not likely they're gonna get a lot more.
Well, you mentioned your comfort level, where is it at now?
The bus?
Yeah, as far as buses, do we need more to get to the comfort level?
This actually gets us back right where we feel very comfortable, our problem was is, spring is a horrible time, because you potentially some days could have four activity buses, okay, so when you're getting down to that third and fourth bus, sub bus, that you're putting out on a route, sometimes they're not all the, the greatest shape, because they're on the tail end of their life, so this, it puts us, it puts us in a lot better position.
Well, as far as schedule, anything to worry about going forward, do we need a lot coming up, or?
Are you talking on the buses?
On the buses.
Now, we should be back now to where, we needed to do this to get back on, on schedule, because we had one year where we could, can't work out, we can't get buses, and what we essentially did is, we were back to that now, where if we get one a year, yeah, and that's always in the budget.
And the same thing with fleet vehicles?
Other fleet vehicles, I asked Jared, I said, where are we at with that, and he says, we're very comfortable, he says, we're probably good until FY '24.
Oh, wow.
He said, we, and the other thing, we have some things that are probably gonna help with the fleet vehicles a little bit, because we had some transportation that is presently happening, Jenny, probably isn't gonna happen next year, that we're using our other fleet vehicles for, so...
Motion for approval of the bus purchase. So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next item is approval of inter-agency contract for special education instruction program 2021 school year for Denison Community School District.
So, the next two are just special education contracts that we have with districts where students are attending and we pay for them, it's a special program, probably, that we don't have a program in here, lots of times, we are transporting, so we may be transporting to this Denison one, and then the next one for Des Moines, that may be a student who lives there, but we, we have to pay for that, that's just in code, we have to pay for their, their schooling, so those are those two.
Discussion? Okay, how about a motion then, please?
And we're doing these separate, right?
Yes.
I, I make a motion for approval of the number eight on the agenda.
Second.
Good, second.
Yes, second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of inter-agency contract for special education instruction program for 2021, '22 school year with Des Moines Independent Community School District.
I'll motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the approval of computer bids for 2023, 2022, '23 school year.
Lisa Swanson here, if you guys have any questions, Lisa, do you want to talk to the bids?
Yeah, this is just our, our annual purchase of machines, every year, we buy sixth grade, incoming sixth graders and the incoming ninth grade machines, the intent is the sixth graders will keep their machines all the way through middle school, and then at the end of that life, we'll, we send those over to the elementary school, the ninth grade, they keep theirs through all four years of high school, so we went out and got, we requested bids from four vendors, we got them back from three, we requested from two local vendors, IT, or ThinkSpace and Lightbox Systems, Lightbox did not respond with a bid, so we truly only have just the one bid from ThinkSpace, and they actually bid me on two different models of machine, so they're listed twice there, but it's our recommendation that we go with the bid from Riverside Technologies, we have an existing relationship with them, Riverside quoted us on HP model machines, which is what we have in place right now, so we have spare parts and everything else for them, whereas the low bid from ThinkSpace was for Lenovo brands, we, we would have to replenish the stock supply, which would kind of negate that difference in bids, if we went with those, but our recommendation is we go with Riverside, we have a fantastic relationship with them, we've been with them for 10 years now, outside of purchasing the machines, they do a lot of things for us, and help us out with, when we have some issues with them, so, it's our recommendation that we go with the 250 machines from Riverside.
Just probably a silly question, what's the $1 buyout, 48-month lease?
You do a 48-month lease, and it's just a $1 buyout at the end, as opposed to a market value, the lease rate would be less if I did a market value, but then you end up, you're paid whatever the price of those machines are at the end of that four years.
You, you keep it after 48 months for a dollar?
We keep them for a dollar, yeah.
So, this is 173,500?
Uh, yes, that's what I'm...
And what is the, this is just FYI for the estimated lease cost?
That's for my benefit, I budgeted about to 40, basically, basically 44,000 every year out of my budget to, to pay for them on a four-year lease, so...
Do we, do they actually have these computers that, because weren't, didn't we run into something, just because I have a kid that was miffed off, they didn't get their computer or something, I thought that was how I noticed.
Uh, thanks to COVID, when we, we ordered our machines in March of last year, they were actually delivered to RTI in January of this year, but because it's the middle of the school year, we don't have a place to work them, so, we defer delivery of those until the summer, but they're telling me that these machines could be a four to six month lead time as well, which is why I'm doing the purchase as early as I...
So, is that sixth graders that would get the ones in the summer?
Next, next year, the new sixth graders for next year, and then seventh graders.
Yeah, that, it's my sixth grader, she was a little sassy, she didn't get her new computer this year, so I was wondering.
Okay, next year.
So, that's why we have to order them now, so they get here?
Yeah, I'm trying to get ahead of the, the delay.
Any other discussion on that?
Do we budget those for this every year?
It comes out, yeah. Okay. Sorry, sorry, you came on a lot of questions, I guess.
Questions are good.
Yeah, Lisa does a fantastic job with getting all the data, and yeah, staying on top of a lot of this computer stuff.
And a motion for approval of the computer bids.
So you... What you want to say for the, the actual...
Oh, as recommended, from RT, is it the?
Riverside Technology. Riverside Technology.
Yes, Riverside Technology.
I said 187,500? Nope, 1...
173,500.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll motion to approve the purchase of computers for 173, what?
500.
5, nope, from Riverside Computers Technologies.
Thank you, Jade, for saying that so well. And a second?
Sure, also come in.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the item number 11 is the approval of the acceptance of the June 30, 2021 audit report, might have some discussion on this.
What I'm, what I typically, and we have enough new people, what I've typically done, I go through it page by page, it takes about two hours, I'm kidding.
Say that again, Brian?
Said I go through it page by page.
I go page by page, and it takes about two and a half hours, no, I'm just kidding. What I usually done in the past is, is I pick out some highlights, probably, and actually, I, this year, I was fortunate enough, I was able to get you guys' stuff ahead of time, because there, they were late, we were late enough for receiving it, I went ahead and I've got the stuff two years already, I, the points I'm gonna go over are the same things, but I just kind of want to reiterate, and then if somebody's got some questions, so, if Jenny would advance it to page nine, I've got about 10 or 11 bullet points is all I'm gonna go over. Okay, page nine, the general fund revenues increased during the fiscal year from the 1,373, the increased 1,373,000 this past year, the increase is really largely due to the federal revenues and the stimulus funds, we, this is pretty much expected, the expenditures also increased, and a lot of that's got to do with there were some additional expenditures, so, that's on page nine, and then the other one that's important is the solvency ratio, our solvency ratio went from 10.9% to 16.7%, three guesses as to why it went up, a lot of the, we, your, the cash flow's a little easier when you have the stimulus funds coming in, obviously, those coming in, the expenditures will trail that, but that's, that's the biggest increase, just to give you an idea, we, the, one of the finance committee goals in the past has always been to be in the 10 or 12% range, and ultimately, hopefully, that's where we're gonna end after this all shakes out. Then page 11, don't have a whole lot to say on 11, other than our district's total net position, and a lot of people say, explain that a little bit, if you were in a business and you had your assets, what you own minus liabilities, what you owe, it equals your equity, well, our net position is our equity, so that means our, our net position increased by 1.6 million this past year. Page 13.
Hey, Brian, and this figure eight here has government, business, okay, it'd be the total district is what, is the column?
Yep, yep, there's a lot of figures there, I tried to make it, I, I tried to keep it as simple as possible, I guess that's what I tried to do. Page 13. And, there, thank you, right there, the revenues from our business-type activities, and that essentially is our nutrition fund, okay, the revenues increased 290,000, expenditures only increased 180,000, like, just about every school district in the nation, it's a, a lot of that's because all the lunches are being paid for by the federal government, if you have a negative for the year on that, right now, you're, you're trying to do it, so...
How long do we anticipate that?
Well, last I've heard it, it's terminating as of the end of this school year, but I know they've spoke about extending it again, so, as of right now, it's at the end of the school year, okay? Page 14, and if you just want to go a little bit farther, Jenny, this is the one I always liked, is budgetary highlights, the, the district did operate within its total budget for the year, and if, as noted, we will note later on in my things I'm going through here, we did have on the nutrition fund, the main thing is, you have to stay within your total budget, on the nutrition fund, we were slightly over, and it is noted in the, in the notes to the financial statement, so much of that was, is just in the timing, when you could get things, when things had to get paid for, it was a real struggle last summer. Page 15. Page 15. And if you want to slide down a little bit farther. You know, we constantly monitor our budget to make sure we're trying to stay in a healthy position, and a lot of it has to do with, we really just have to keep an eye on the enrollment, on the level of growth and stuff like that. There are years where, where our authority could drop some, but you just have to take measures to go ahead and correct that. We did have slight decrease in enrollment. And the other one that I always want to make sure I point out, that our, our penny receipts, our save receipts, which is the statewide sales tax, that does take care of paying both our general application bond, which is going to be paid off this summer, our sales tax bond, and then we also use it for, for technology purposes, but it's enough to cover all those. Then you get a skip all the way to 65.
Get it closed.
Okay, and 65, with that essentially going to tell you, what they do every year when they come in and do the audit, they do compliance checks of our federal programs, and we met compliance on all of them. And then if you want to go to 67 and 68. 67 and 68, you can read that all, but basically what that's going to tell you is, is they do a study of our internal controls or instances of non-compliance, and they were not able to note any of their, which means we're doing a good job of segregating duties and, that's kind of a pet peeve of me. Somebody says, why don't we do this? I said, well, we, we've got, yeah, I, you know, we can't do it where it's not segregating the duties. And then finally, the last, on 69, right here, this is the one where I said we were on our nutrition budget. We were over on that. We were within total budget, but we were over on that one, so they do have to note that in the financial statement. And then 69, 70, and 71, there were no other findings, which is always good. It's, no findings is great. The only thing there was an audit adjustment of one student that I believe we overcounted, I believe, which that's not a horribly unusual thing, but they have to note that also in the, they have to note that in the financial statement, so when we do our aid and levy on our budget, that they have that to remember. But that's all I got. I bet you got lots of questions.
What's the downside of being over 15 on the solvency ratio?
Well, you know, if you need to cash reserve levy, it does prohibit you there, but that would also tell you if you're over 15, you probably don't need to cash reserve a levy as much. You know, there's nothing, there are schools that have 25 and 30% solvency ratios. That doesn't always mean they have the authority, Joe, because it's two different things. Authority is your ability to spend. Cash is what you pay it with. So, you know, you can, you can be authority, authority rich and cash poor. That means you don't have the cash to pay for something, you got the ability to buy, or you can be just the opposite. We're kind of in that middle where our authority mirrors somewhat of what the cash we have. And again, with the stimulus funds, that skewers it somewhat for a short period of time. Same thing happened, when I first started here, we had ARA funds, which essentially, it was kind of the same thing, and it was some, there were a lot of financial difficulties among schools, and they gave them what they called ARA funds, and then we had a period of time where our solvency ratio went up, but then it'll naturally regress. It just naturally, it's going to regress. Okay, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so everyone knows, people at the Iowa School Board meeting in Des Moines think that he is a genius, because he made all of us at our first board meeting, you know, what silo this money comes out of, and I was sitting at a roundtable with someone, I didn't know who he was, and he was asking me questions, like, can I photocopy that? I was like, yeah, sure. And it ended up being the CFO, the new CFO for the Iowa Association, the board there. So I told him your name, told him where I'm from, so.
Well, the audits, to piggyback off that, the audits that he does is, yeah.
You just got to be prepared.
Is that hot in here now?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I remember that, we were told that, like, unheard of.
Okay, any more discussion on the audit? Is, what do you think? Is there anything particularly we need to look at in there?
Jim, the big thing in an audit, if you get to the last few pages and you don't have findings, our finding was, is we had, we had an audit adjustment, which that sometimes is way out of our control, an audit adjustment on enrollment. That sometimes is very much out of our control. It's something that will happen. Our other one was, is we're, we had, the nutrition was slightly overspent, and it's very explainable because of the fact it just was a timing issue. But if you can get back there and you don't have any findings, that if you're not, if you are, you have no issues of non-compliance, you have no internal control issues, and you have very little other findings, that's, honestly, that's the first thing I look at. The financial stuff, I see every day, and it is, as long as you're staying within your authority and you're keeping your solvency ratio in the right spot, and you're not overspending funds, the most important part to me is looking at the findings.
Helps us new members to understand, but I see that we have $22 million in revenue, $32 million in assets, and about $20 million in loans.
You're going to have to, you're going to have to be specific to the page you're talking about.
Well, I'm looking at page 12, 11, just to get some frame of reference. It's just have some frame of reference, and maybe those are too general for.
That's pretty general to give an answer.
For CPA, but.
Well, that's, that's pretty general, I didn't, it's what context you're asking that, yeah. I guess.
12 and 11.
So you got to be in the manager.
No, 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 I didn't even think of it. Good job.
I guess one is revenue and the other is assets, assets and liabilities. I guess looking at a P and L and a balance sheet, is it?
Okay, so what specifically are you asking?
Well, I'm looking at, on page 12, which says 2021 total revenues, $22,329,000. And expenses, of course, you're going to spend most of the money you make, so that's pretty predictable.
Oh, okay, you, I see where you're at. I was trying to find, yeah, what that, so you're in the 21 column for the total district, right?
Right.
What that, what that signifies is essentially, our total revenues for the year were $22 million, our total expenditures were about 20.5, so that's where I go back to our increase in our net position was 1.6 million for the year. What that would also probably, maybe in some ways, signify, take that with a grain of salt, because there's times where some of that could be caused by timing issues, because you're looking at all funds here, Jim, not just the general fund. You're looking at all funds. It could be a combination of when your debt payments came due that year or so. You might, you've got to understand that's a snapshot, as one day. So if you, that, that next day, July 1st, you may have paid all your insurance for the year. You may have had a debt payment for the year. So some of that can be timing issues too. With that being said, I would also say, do understand the stimulus funds did not hurt school districts financially.
And how much of a factor were they in that?
Well, I'd want to research that before I'd answer that in public. I mean, I.
Fair amount, I suspect.
I would say yes. Not 1.6 million, but no. Yes, it definitely helped us.
And this is as of June 30th, 2021?
Yep. All schools have a June 30th.
Oh, there we go. There you go.
It's isolated now. Okay.
Interesting study.
All schools have a June 30th. Thanks for.
I didn't even think to pass it to you, sorry.
And solvency ratio, I know you talked about that before. What were the other couple things that are worthwhile noting?
The three things that the board has always set goals on are this. One is solvency ratio. The second thing is unspent authority, staying within a range. And the third, the third thing was, is overall texture. That's the three parameters they used to, they've used in the past to kind of drive some of the decisions. That's not to say they, if the finance committee wanted to change that, that there couldn't be other, or added or more, but that's the three that they've driven a lot of their decisions.
You're good. Seems like everyone's thinking, but you're going pretty well. Okay, how about a, let's see, a, approval, a motion to approve, please. Thinking about motion to approve this item number 11.
So who?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly, here we have the consent agenda. We can break these out, or we can keep them all together if no one wants to break them out, and so we'll turn that over here and see the minutes for January 17th, 2022, and also the accounts payable and financial reports.
Who is on that?
I'm yours.
You want?
Yeah. Sure, Joe, he's bringing a lot, but, you know, everything, he seems to have answers for every question. That's weird.
I saw one item for $300,000. The rest of them were really as big, but I forget what it was for. Doesn't make any difference. Not that I was questioning.
I think it was the insurance payment. Which can't be a big item. So I didn't see anything else. I think Joe and I were on the, on the, that task, and I didn't see any other items, any other discussion on the consent agenda? How about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good. Before we adjourn, I believe Superintendent wanted to mention a couple of upcoming things for board meetings.
Yeah, so I think we're going to have to, we will have to have a special board meeting in order to ratify our negotiations and just approve them, because we'd like to try it before the marketing.
You have to meet with your people again. How long is that?
So, so we would like, we will hold a special board meeting, and it can be fairly quick, so that would be on there. We also, if we could sign that IJ contract, if you guys are okay with moving forward with that, that way it's in board minutes. And then we have an EFS, which stands for, Jim told me today.
It's actually plaster on, around the top fascia of a building. It's an insulated system, foam behind it. It's plaster on top of it.
So that needs to be fixed at the elementary, and we put it out for bid, and we got one bid back, but not the second bid, and they will have the second bid here soon, but.
Maybe Wednesday.
Maybe Wednesday, so if, if we get that back, we'd just like, I mean, it has to be done, so, but we have to have two bids at least, so that didn't make it to the agenda.
There's a possibility, there's a possibility there may be some insurance. We don't know. We honestly don't know the answer to that.
But for sure, we have to have a special board meeting in order to, to accept.
And part of the reason we want to kind of move that one forward is getting on the list to get it done.
And the repair of it, what does it involve taking parts of it off, or all of it off?
You'd have, that one, you'd have to ask Mike. Honestly, he's been dealing with them.
What is it, in what building, or what?
It's the primary. The elementary, the new building.
I mean, you need it in the primary.
Primary, it's the new part, like you can see it.
Wait, in the gym or the hallway?
Outside.
Oh, outside, okay.
It's near the top. I could walk out and show you. Outside.
Above the doors?
Fascia, right.
Okay.
Think fascia. There you go.
Now, special meetings were just in what we are going through, so.
Hey, hey, I read those.
So how soon do you work?
Yeah, we will pick a day. We'll probably wait till we hear back from everybody, and then just send out an email and pick a day.
Because we have to post the agenda.
Will be next week, do you suspect? It might be the next week?
We would like to have it next week if we're.
My kitchen house.
Depends on, yeah, when we hear back.
Not so bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there any particular days that are. Are there any bad days for the board members that don't work in the next week or two?
Oh, it might be this week?
No, I know.
Oh, okay.
All this stuff, it gets you informed quick, doesn't it?
Everybody else okay? Very good. How about a motion to adjourn? Are we ready for that?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We would like this.
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.